Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the May Penrich School Board Meeting. I'd like to call this meeting to order. First item of business is to pledge allegiance to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. I would note tonight before I ask Mrs. Cron to call the roll that one of our board members, Mr. Kraus, will be on the phone, so if everyone would speak up, please, so that he can hear what is going on. Mrs. Cron.
Mrs. Vanis Flanins.
Here.
Mr. Casper?
Here.
Mrs. Cullen?
Here.
Mr. Kraus?
Here.
Mrs. Miller?
Here.
Mr. Agomo?
Here.
Mrs. Schmidt?
Here.
Mrs. Yardley?
Here.
Dr. Yornell?
Here. Thank you. First item beyond that is student recognition. Dr. Rattigan.
As you know, at each of our board meetings, we have been recognizing students who have gone above and beyond or have excelled in some way, and tonight is no different. I'd like to introduce you tonight to two high school students whose quick thinking and initiative prevented what could have been a major catastrophe. On May the 4th, at approximately 7:05 a.m., 11th grader Hayden Flanagan ran into the main office at the high school to report a vehicle on fire in our parking lot. Hayden grabbed a fire extinguisher from the lobby and ran back out to the vehicle. As he returned to the vehicle, another 11th grader, Eric Poirier, took a fire extinguisher as well and began to address the fire. Together, they managed to prevent the blaze from spreading to adjoining vehicles, and who knows what might have happened? So Hayden and or Hayden and Eric, please come forward. On behalf of the school board, the staff, and your fellow students, we applaud your quick thinking and bravery in taking control of a very dangerous situation. I was just telling them they'll both be receiving a certificate of appreciation from the district on behalf of their wonderful efforts.
Thank you, Dr. Rattigan, and thank you, gentlemen, for your efforts. At this moment, we will move to questions and comments from guests. Please give us your name and your municipality of residence. We ask that the speaker limit himself to three minutes. The Penrich School Board welcomes public comment according to policy 903. We remind everyone of the following: that public comments shall be limited to three minutes unless otherwise specified by the board. Participants must be recognized by the presiding officer and note their name and municipality. All statements shall be directed to the presiding officer rather than to individual board members, district employees, or members of the public. The speaker may speak once during each comment period; there will be one before and one after. Please note that these sessions are designated for comments. Questions raised and not addressed may be followed up at a later time. Do we have someone who wishes to speak tonight? Yes, ma'am. Please come to the podium, turn on the microphone. Who should be a button?
My name is Wendy Bradley. I'm from West Rock Hill Township. My major concern that I have right now is issues with people passing our school buses during pickups and drop-offs on Allentown Road.
Better?
Yeah. Okay. Thank you. We're having issues with people passing our school buses at pickup and drop-offs on Allentown Road, which is an extremely busy road. I have called our police department, which were down to two police officers in the afternoon, so there's no one really to patrol it, but I don't really expect that. But I guess what I'm looking for is maybe some kind of proactive thing we could get involved with, or what we could do as parents to make that situation a little bit better. Our bus driver is excellent, and she makes sure that my kids get on and off without any issues. But I even had last Thursday was an actually company van that went by. Logo, nice and big on the van. I called the transportation department. Nobody would take my name or where I lived. I actually called the company, and he jumped right on that immediately. So as a parent, I think you know what other concerns we can do to keep our kids safe on our school buses.
Thank you. I certainly empathize with your comments. I happen to live on Allentown Road, so I know how rapidly people travel on that, especially at times around 7:00 and 3:00 in the afternoon, as shifts are changing and the like. So I'm not sure what the school district can do, but certainly will try to do something if we can to make it more of an issue that people understand that is against the law, and there are penalties for it.
Is there a place you could direct me in concerning maybe getting signs put up there? Would that be our township or state that I would look into?
I would presume that it would be the state, but I don't know that for sure.
Okay, place to start.
You might want to contact Representative Stats, who is the legislator in the House that represents West Rock Hill. So he would be a start, or one of the supervisors in West Rock Hill Township.
I will do that. Thank you.
Thank you for your concern.
Thanks.
Anyone else? Yes, ma'am.
My name is Mary Overby, and I'm actually here on my behalf. I'm not sure if I'm doing this the right way or not, but I'm on the personnel report to be addressed later this evening. I began my employment with the Penrich School District in February of 2010, working as a five-day-a-week, 10-month employee as a support school nurse. In 2014-15, I decided to go down to three days, which leaves me at Siler Elementary Wednesdays, Thursdays, and Fridays each week. My supervisor, Linda Tennant, had asked me at that time, would I be willing to fill in on Mondays and Tuesdays as needed, because we had very limited number of subs? And I said I would, but I didn't want to work both of the days, because that would defeat my purpose of going down to the three days. I ended up actually working quite a bit. I did get a letter from the board that I was actually considered a sub and would be making the sub pay. I did question that with Esther Brown in Human Resources at the time. I let the ball drop when she told me I would. That's how it was voted. Being an employee, I had just really assumed that I would be making my hourly rate if I worked extra. I did have to be put into the system source for teachers, so that when there would be a sick call-off, I would be called the night before, or as early as possible, because I have a family, and I didn't want Linda Tennant to have to be calling me 7:00, 7:30. As I started working more, I had more and more staff from different schools asking me why I was turning in a timesheet when I was a school employee, that I should have been swiping in, that it was in our contract. So my confusion is, is I have been told that because it was voted that I should be making the sub-rate, and filling out the timesheets on Mondays and Tuesdays when I work. I hope that in future, if I can't be making my hourly salary, and to be honest with you, I would even like to be reimbursed, because I filled in quite a bit, especially when a certified school nurse retired in November. I actually picked up her Mondays and Tuesdays until the new nurse, the new certified nurse would start in February. I'm a dedicated employee, call-off very little, very compassionate to the kids, and so I guess I would like to see a better explanation to an employee that may be unfamiliar with these types of situations. I'm a nurse, so I worked in hospitals and home care, and there was never a union involved in it. And that is another concern. I'm under a contract with the district that states what my hourly salary is. So again, I want there to be some kind of thinking and maybe addressing in the future that, you know, if that's the way it has to go, that it has to be the sub-rate. Linda is aware, and I'm not trying to be threatening, because this isn't me at all, but I will not be subbing anymore. I worked today for my certified nurse. She's retiring, and I did pick up her extra days that she needs coverage, and I will continue to do that. But in a seven-hour day, I saw 34 kids, one nurse. Nobody ever checks on you to see if you bought your lunch or anything. So I just really think that we need to give that some extra thought. If that ever happens, somebody comes in and takes my three days, and then is willing to pick up some extra time if there's the need. Thank you.
This is Overby. What is your municipality of residence?
Oh, I'm sorry, Purgacy.
And when did the change occur?
The 2014-15 school year.
Okay. I would ask that Mrs. McHale look into this and get back to you with whatever she put the recommendation, maybe.
She has, and that's why it's actually coming to you. I have been in contact with her.
Okay. It's on the executive agenda.
Okay. Sounds great. Thank you.
I apologize for not realizing that.
That's okay. Sorry, thank you.
Anyone else? Yes, ma'am.
Hi, my name is Anne Goncal, and I'm in Bedminster Township, and I wanted to come and talk to you, given the opportunity this month, regarding Bedminster Elementary. I am at the end of my nine-year stint there. All four of my girls have gone through, and my feeling is not what I thought it would be. I thought it would be disappointment, sadness, because they had some of the most wonderful years. But since the present principal, Mia DiPaolo, has been on board, the first year, she was outstanding, and then it started to deteriorate. She has put it to the point where while our interim principal is in, my youngest daughter said it has been pleasant at the school. The tenor of the school is much happier, much better. She's a micromanager. She doesn't let anybody do their own job. She definitely is far more in-depth than what she should be. Tiny little issues will come up, and she will be involved. And also, they go, why is she even involved in this? And I'm not a boat rocker. I'm someone that just kind of, you know, my kids are here, they're doing good, they're learning. The teachers there are outstanding, and everyone walks on eggshells. No one knows what they can do, and she's been out. Previous to that, there had been lockdowns, and the police have been in school. We, as parents, never even heard about it. And when something happens at high school, or something happens at middle school, we get a, you know, one of the email blasts, just letting us know, hey, this was going on. Things happen with our youngest children, and we weren't even aware of it. My daughter's coming home going, hey, there are cops at the school. I'm like, hmm, what? Luckily, she's older, so I wasn't as concerned. If it had been happening when they were much younger, I would have been more concerned. But I know that there's not a lot of parents at Bedminster that will say anything, and I have a fifth grader, so I'm out of there. And my feeling right now is, oh my God, I'm so glad to get out, because it's not pleasant. I personally witnessed her, sorry, rolled her eyes at a parent. She has corrected me once in the office, when I was just answering a question that the temporary secretary had asked me, and it was over a silly thing. And I just, the tenor is wrong, she's a wrong fit. She is a very good principal. I will not say that she's not. But she is more in tune with a school that does not have such high parent participation, because I know she is at Pottstown, and she had made comments about she would see parents. She'd see them once in a while, and that's it. Here, Bedminster, we're, it's like a family, where parents are more than willing to come in and help and do everything, and the participation has gone down. Lunchroom monitors, people aren't signing up anymore. We have to keep sending out messages, please, will you sign up? Please, will you commit? Because people don't want to encounter her, because she is that rude. And it's a shame, because she is a good principal, but her people skills are lacking as far as parents. And all we want to do is make sure that our kids are having a good education and having a good experience. And a lot of our spirit things have gone away. I mean, they go to North, and they're like, wow, this is great. We're doing all these really great things. And you shouldn't go to the middle school and feel that way when the elementary school should be the fun place, and it slowly gets harder. So I just really wanted to speak up for a lot of the parents that are afraid to come board. They're all afraid of repercussions, because they're still in it, you know? There are parents that have little ones coming in. I'm hearing it from first-grade parents, that they're like, they can't stand her. And I'm like, you know what? Personality issues, one thing, but the way she treats the parents is disrespectful, is the best way to describe it. So I just want to make sure, make sure that there's a voice to it.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, ma'am.
I actually wasn't going to speak tonight. I wanted to come and support the Bedminster crew that I was hopeful would come out tonight. I just wanted to support what Anne said. I've spoken to Dr. Rattigan and Dr. Price. The reason I wasn't going to talk is because I don't have a kid there anymore. My daughter, we withdrew her in December. We have four children in the district that love Penrich, and my daughter was having a really hard time. She's a great kid. She gets great grades, socially appropriate. She was coming home every day in the fall with lots of anxiety. I actually thought something was physically wrong. We took her to the doctor. No, no. And I just figured out, you know what? It's the school, it's the tenor, it's the feeling of the school. Teachers are walking around, they seem like they're very stressed. The principal seems very stressed. She isn't and wasn't unprofessional. She was very unprofessional at times. I saw it many times. Actually, and I hate to use this word, I think it's overused, but very bullying behavior at times with the students and the parents. And I do agree, I think a lot of parents were very reticent about speaking. They don't want to have repercussions for their kids or themselves. Very hard decision for us to pour Reina. It was a great decision. It doesn't mean we won't come back. It's up in the air, but I will say, and I don't mean it in any way to be manipulative, but we definitely won't come back for fifth grade if she's there. I just think she sets a very bad tone for the entire school. I don't want my daughter there. So I know a lot of parents feel very same way. I just wanted to support all the parents who aren't here tonight and wish they could be. So I know things are in flux. She's on medical leave. She knows a lot of parents have been upset with her. I was looking at your sign driving in, proud principal prepared. The district should be proud. The pride should come from top down. It's the leadership at the top that sets the tone for the teachers, for the support staff, for the parents, for the kids. Reina has lots of friends that's still at Bedminster. We had a party, kids were coming over. I say, how's it going? They're like, oh, I hate school. It's getting even worse. That is so sad for elementary school. That's not the way it should be. It should be a fun, exciting place, and when the kids are coming out of the school, they can't wait for the year to end, there's something very, very wrong. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, sir.
My name is Bogey Rosipal. I am the parent of two children here in Penrich, including my daughter, who is also at Bedminster. And it's necessary for us to come out and speak, so that you're aware of what it is that's occurring. One of my peers has already spoken to the treatment of the parents. I've received that treatment. We don't need to go over there again. Programs that we, parents, have gone ahead and run for the children have been shut down. School Store has been part of Bedminster for years. I ran it every other week, because we didn't have enough volunteers. This year, that was taken away. This was an opportunity for kids to come in, learn how to handle money, make change, prioritize. Happened before classes started, but it was taken away because it was somehow detracting from educational time. Okay. A program we instituted three years ago was called Invention Convention, where third through fifth graders created a product, invented it, designed it, built it, and they learned from it. It was kind of like a science fair with a business tilt to it. Kids loved it, ate it up. I've been involved in that for three years. This year, I was going to take over, as the woman who had been running the program needed to step back and pull back on her volunteering because of her own issues. I was asked to create a full proposal for what we intended to do. So I wrote up a nice, long proposal of what this program would look like. I was told that, no, we're going to scale back after we talk with curriculum at Penrich to make sure it falls with the district curriculum, and we want to scale back only to fourth and fifth graders, because it's too much for third graders, and a number of other things were thrown out to me. At the same time, we're receiving flyers about the STEM camp coming out that Penrich is running this summer for first graders enough. My question to her was, how can we teach anything to children in elementary school so that they can come to this program fully prepared to go ahead and invent something? Are we going to be talking about engineering? Are we going to be teaching them how to wire or circuit board? Will they be welding? Is that what we'll be teaching? Because that's what all these kids are learning and doing on their own in the three years that I've been involved. I don't think we're going to be teaching to them. Let their discovery lead teaching. That's a program that was taken away from our children this year. But most importantly, what I want to speak about is, and this was touched upon, is the environment of bullying of the children that I firsthand exhibited multiple times at the hands of Mrs. DiPaolo. I'll be honest, all this took place last year. But many times in the lunchroom, where I volunteer at least every other week, I was just there today, because I saw we had no volunteers today, and I was going to be driving by, so I stopped in to do it. Multiple times at the lunchroom, I saw her address children and berate them for two, three minutes, raising her voice so everyone in the entire cafeteria would hear, over miniscule infractions. And she would just go on and on, driving these children into the ground. I wasn't going to take any more of it. And probably scuttled, but got around that I was spread up with this, and that's why I haven't seen her in the lunchroom this year. And I'm thankful for that, that she hasn't been there, because kids get to have that 40 minutes or whatever, to go ahead, eat their meal, be kids, and enjoy it, without the threat of, oh no, Mrs. DiPaolo is here. I can't tell you how many times my daughter told me, Mrs. DiPaolo just came, took my lunch, and threw it out. I wasn't done yet. I said to her, Alexa, did you tell her you weren't done? Well, no. She'd get angry at me. Fear is not an environment where children learn well. Respect, tolerance, that's necessary. That's something that we are not receiving as parents, and certainly not what our children are receiving, nor is it what I've noticed some of the staff at Bedminster are receiving from Mrs. DiPaolo. I've seen staff members also being berated by her. That's completely unprofessional. If there was an issue, she could address that in her office, not out in the open, where other teachers, parents, and children can see her berating and belittling the peers that she has at that office. I thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak here tonight. I came out because I love the children at that school. They are phenomenal. They are capable of more than I could have ever imagined from little kids. I adore them, and I want to see them in an environment that will truly nurture their learning, so they can go on, come to North, and see how much even better that is, because that's what I've heard from every kid that's gone on. I want Bedminster to become that stepping stone once again, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else? Not will move on to the agenda. The first item would be the consent calendar. Are there any items in the consent calendar that board members would like voted on separate? If not, do I have a motion to approve items A through I of the consent?
So moved.
Thank you, Mrs. Melvin. And a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Yardley. Moved and seconded to approve the consent calendar, including the minutes, bills list, capital project, self-insurance, food service, student activities bills list, the financial report, the budget transfers, and the personnel report, and EDR report from the superintendent. Comments or questions from board members? If not, all those in favor? I, opposed. Motion carries nine, Mr., I'm sorry, Mr. Kraus, are you on the line?
Yes, I am.
And you voted?
I voted to approve.
Okay, thank you. Motion has carried 9-0. Thank you. We'll move to the student liaison report. We have Mr. Carey here tonight. Are you prepared to give us an update?
Yes, I am.
Thank you.
Yes, I am. Sidewalk chalk day is going to be June 1st, and we are working on having a possible blood drive. And that's it from student council.
All right, thank you. Thank you. For the president's report, I do not have any new right-to-know requests to report on tonight, but do we have a student, I'm sorry, safety committee update?
Should be Mr. Burkhold or and Mr. Loffler can report on that.
Okay.
Good evening. The safety committee was held on May 10th. The meeting was called order at 1:35. There were 15 members present at the meeting. The minutes from the April meeting were read and approved. The monthly billing inspection was Penn South Middle School. There were no major issues at the school for the inspection, so no follow-up will be needed. One of the comments is the age of the school is in very nice shape, very clean, and very good condition for the old school. Transportation report, there was none. The nurse coordinator, there was none. Nutritional services, there was no report. Athletics, there was no report. People services reported that all knockboxes are being updated with keys, fobs, maps, thumb drives throughout the district. They're also looking into purchasing additional raptor equipment to handle the overflow. With old business, I reported that the crates of books from last month that were at West Rock Hill in the oil room were going to be, I did talk to the principal, they're going to be obsolete and removed as soon as the obsolete form comes through. With new business, I reported that the renewal application for insurance for this committee has been approved, and we are receiving a 5% discount applied to our workman's comp. Mr. Bogan stated that the dumpsters at the high school, he noted, from the dumpsters picking them up have been not placed back properly, so the custodians, when they come up to the dumpsters from behind, they're farther and farther away, they have to reach over and over and over. So we discussed possibly either putting up a railing, or trying to get the dumpster company to keep the dumpsters back against, probably the problem with that is they want to leave a little space, so they don't start beating up the cement pad that's there, so we can either put bumper guards in or railings, so custodians won't happen to fall into the dumpster or off the four-quit ledge. So we'll look into that. Mr. Branch reported that he's been discussing with county how to get our panic alerts received quicker into the police station. We'll look at the police station. I'm filing up a simplex, and I did have a couple conversations with them, our monitoring company. They, in fact, they're looking into how to make that a higher priority. So again, we had a test here a few months ago. Just so happened that Sabona had the local township police here just to witness the evacuation. With that, the police were here, they knew we pushed the panic at a certain time. It took about six or seven minutes for them to receive the call, even though falling through, the call went right to county, but that's where the six or seven minute delay was. So we're working with my alarm company to make that a higher priority, so when that does get called, that they're notified immediately. does get called that they're notified immediately. Also another item that came up is when these systems were put in, starting maybe six years ago, it was code for what I believe at the time when, let's just say the high school's having long announcements and there's an alarm, fire alarm, or a panic, that if you push the button or if there's a fire alarm, it overrides the PA system for announcements. At one point that seemed to decode. Now looking into, is it Alice training that we may be looking into, that we may want to start making announcements during that. So I have to contact simplex to see if, in fact, if we can override that PA system if needed to make certain announcements. So the meeting was adjourned at 1:55 and our next safety committee is June 14th.
Thank you. Anything to add?
Yes. We're also currently in process of scheduling a meeting and reviewing the Quaker Town current intruder policy as we are looking at possible Alice training. In addition, we're reviewing all hazard binders and reviewing and updating all drills and the evacuation process for each building. As Mr. Loffler had stated, the knock boxes are currently being updated. They'll be updated then quarterly throughout every continued year. The committee for safety and security is meeting this week. We'll be identifying exactly what needs to occur in the training that will occur with administrators and then all building staff. So that way all students, staff, and building, whether it be at the district office or the school buildings, know the drills and exactly when and should, what should occur during those times.
Thank you. In terms of the next item, the PAC, board representative, first of all, PAC means Penridge area coordinating committee. It is a committee that was formed at the behest of Dr. Kish, former superintendent, and consisted of a representative or representatives from the district as well as from each of the eight municipalities throughout the Penridge district. That has probably been most of two decades ago that it was formed, and for a long time the board sent a representative, appointed a representative as part of the standing committee process. It's kind of fallen by the wayside. One of the problems was that not all board members wanted to go. It represents one night a month typically. The reason for the formation of this was that Dr. Kish and others felt that it was valuable to have insight from our municipalities in terms of things such as land development, extension of water lines or sewer lines which ultimately impact land development, and just a good interchange of information. Because obviously, anytime we build or renovate a school, we end up with a land development plan through one or more of the municipalities. Probably a classic example of that is here at the high school, which happens to have property in both Percasie Borough and East Rock Hill Township. So it took not one, but two essentially coordinated land development plans. One of the municipalities, one of the supervisors, Mr. Diamond, former teacher at Siler Elementary and now supervisor at East Rock Hill, has requested that the board send representatives to this meeting. So tonight I'd like to ask for a volunteer, I hope. It doesn't have to be tonight specifically. All right, Mrs. Began-Clements, you spoke first and you were on. That would be great if you would represent the board at that. And obviously, you don't have to make a report, but if there's something that you can share with us that would be valuable to the board as a whole, we would certainly appreciate that. So I appreciate greatly the fact that you volunteered. The last thing is a motion to approve the board meeting schedule for this 2016-2017 school year. The dates are here on the agenda for the normal board meetings. Most of these are the third Monday in the month. Two of them fall outside of that. One is the December meeting, which is the annual reorganization meeting. It's dictated by the state school code and has to be in the first week in December. The other is May 15th. The problem there being that if the meeting in May is too late, this meeting is a classic example, we don't have enough time, the 30 days that we need between the May passage of the proposed final budget and the actual final budget passage in June. So the May meeting is normally moved forward sufficiently to allow that timeframe for public inspection. There also are listed three special board meetings that may be needed but aren't specifically known to be needed. Two of those fall in the summer when there are bills to be paid and other issues that need to be addressed. One falls in mid-December because there's a very long timeframe between the December reorganization meeting and the late January board meeting that follows. So I will make a motion that we approve this schedule. And do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Schmidt. Moved in second and to, I'm sorry.
Yardley, sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry. My apologies.
Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, she said it too.
The two of you are confusing me, but that's not far. Anyway, we have a motion and a second to approve the board meeting schedule. Is there any comment or question for board members? If not, all those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries nine zero. Next will be the superintendent's report. Dr. Radigan.
Hey, thank you, Dr. Urnel. Have a couple thank yous this evening. First of all, a special thanks to the PMA for their $1,000 donation for the band trailer. Next, thank you to the Dibbler Elementary School for the district office meeting room display. We have a correction of a donation from the last meeting. Two flagpoles to be installed near the existing main flagpole at Hellman Field was from the class of 1964, not 1965, as previously reported on the April 25th board meeting agenda. So we apologize for that. Our takes pride theme for the month of June will be esteem building. Students will be reminded that the definition of esteem building is to honor ourselves or another for having a particular positive quality. When an individual has a high self-esteem, he or she has self-respect and self-confidence. We esteem others when we have a high opinion and appreciation of them. We can always find something positive about ourselves and others. So that will be the June theme of the month. Some of our points of pride for this month, I'm extremely proud to announce that our minithon on Saturday raised more than $34,000 for the Four Diamonds Club to help fight childhood cancer. That's 9,000 more than the goal that was set and 13,000 more than last year. Some 400 students signed up for the minithon, which was involved in nine hours straight of activities in our high school gym. Minithon was actually the culmination of many months of fundraisers, and thanks to the students and staff who helped to pull off the event, you have set an incredibly high bar for next year's minithon. Next, we have some items involving our student athletes. Congratulations to the boys lacrosse team and Coach John Banks on their exciting come-from-behind win over Kennett on Friday night. This sends them to the playoffs for the first time in our school's history. The team will play at Garden Valley at 7:00 PM tomorrow night. We wish them good luck. Congratulations to the boys track team and Coach Bob Hosler for winning the suburban one continental conference championship meet. Congratulations to the Penn Central Middle Schools four-by-100 relay team for finishing first among nine teams at the Penn Relays last month. The team of Abby Ludlow, Lauren Hess, Isabel Lapoul, and Corinne Mark won the PIAA middle school division with a time of 53.50 seconds. And incidentally, our Penn North team finished third, so we were well represented there. Congratulations to our high school scholar athletes from the spring teams. Cole Bedau for boys lacrosse. Alex Coop tennis. Samuel Cullen volleyball. Jonathan Dariak baseball. Margery Johnson softball. Zachariah Crock boys track. Natalie Madroll girls track. And Emily Went girls lacrosse. Last month, we recognized senior Hannah Card for her amazing talent in woodworking. This month, we recognize another senior for her amazing talent, this time in welding. Carlina Custodia, in her third year at the Upper Bucks County Technical School, recently won a silver medal in welding at the Skills USA State Competition. Her entry, a music box entitled Hide Behind Disguise, captured the judges' attention for its creativity, functionality, and attention to detail. Carlina used a rare old-school welding technique called Ray Crusoe to create the mask. It involved using a pine-based pitch to keep the metal soft and pliable while she sculpted the mask. She spent about a month perfecting the finished product. Our second annual 21st century learning night will be held from 7:00 to 9:00 PM on Tuesday, May 31st, here at the high school. The evening will be an exhibition and celebration of 21st century teaching and learning hosted by Penridge students and teachers. The exhibition is designed to be interactive, allowing participants to discuss the content with teachers and students. Guests will also have the opportunity to tap into the thinking behind the activities. I also have a couple of music items to share with you. Last month, ninth grader Carly Pakenza performed at the Sounds of Excellence Concert in the Perlman Theater at the Kimmel Center in Philadelphia. She plays the horn in the Penridge High School Band but performed a complex five-minute rendition of a Chopin piece on the piano without sheet music. Carly was one of 16 young musicians selected from among the 80 who auditioned for the honor of playing at the Kimmel Center. Also last month, members of the Penn South Middle School chorus had the honor of singing the National Anthem at the Lehigh Valley Iron Pigs Game. The students sang for a paid attendance of 8,338 at Coca-Cola Park. Congratulations on a job well done. And finally, a note about one of our graduates. Julia Tinaney, a member of the class of 2013 and a student at Bard College, has been awarded a $10,000 Davis Projects for Peace Award for a grassroots project called Jappel she has developed. Julia will spend the summer in Senegal promoting economic empowerment. Her project focuses on education and skill-building for poor women living in the rural community of Sandiero. Through the development of economic independence within their own community, these women are able to break an aggressive cycle of poverty, leading to domestic servitude or marriage far from their home village. The $10,000 Davis Prize will support Julia's two-year course that provides training for women in tailoring artisanal skills and the production of sellable goods. So congratulations to our current and former students on all these wonderful accomplishments.
Thank you, Dr. Radigan. At this point, we'll move to the committee reports. I'd like to change the order as I usually do the nights that we propose to pass budgets. So I would like to ask that Mr. Casper lead the finance committee first, and then we will move through the normal agenda.
Thank you. The finance committee met last May 2nd, 2016. There's five motions in our agenda tonight. First motion, one, A through K, motion to approve contracts. All these contracts have been reviewed by the solicitor.
Do we have a second to that motion? Thank you, Mrs. Schmidt. Moved in second and to approve contracts listed in items A through K. Comments or questions from board members? If not, all those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries nine zero. Mr. Casper?
Thank you. Second motion is to approve a settlement agreement for students identified as 2016-49.
Do we have a second to that motion? Thank you, Mrs. Cullen. Moved in second, to approve a settlement agreement. Comments, questions from board members? Not all those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries nine zero. Mr. Casper?
Thank you. Third motion is to approve our renewal membership in the PSBA for 2016-17 at a cost of $15,025.
Do we have a second to that motion? Thank you, Mrs. Schmidt. Moved in second and to approve the PSBA membership. Comments or questions for board members? Not all those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries nine zero. Mr. Casper?
Excuse me, thank you. Fourth motion is to accept award bids and RFPs A through E, I believe it is. Just give me that. A through E.
F.
Hold on a second, I'm reading off. A through F, excuse me.
We have a second to the motion for awarding bids for RFPs. Thank you, Mrs. Schmidt. Moved in second and to approve the bids and RFP for, comments or questions for board members? Not all those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries nine zero. Mr. Casper?
Thank you. The fifth motion is to approve the 1617 general fund proposed final budget. It's been in the motion presented on Form PDE 2028. Revenues of $130,245,398. Expenditures of $131,42,154. As we discussed in our meeting, we're going to commit $796,756 of fund balance in this 1516 fiscal year and authorize the use in 1617. Additionally, set the tax rate at 135.255, an increase of 2.4% from the 201516 budget and authorize all other tax rates to remain unchanged.
Thank you. Do we have a second to that motion? Thank you, Mrs. Miller. Moved in second and to approve the 2016 general fund proposed final budget. Comments or questions for board members?
I would just like to make a comment really briefly. We've been, we have a new business administrator, she put a lot of work into it. This budget, the board has met several times. We've gone over it, I think, very thoroughly. We've made some changes. I don't want to steal your thunder, Sean, I could ask you, we've made some systemic changes that are going to help us in the future. And I'm really happy that it seems we're coming to this juncture of the proposed final. And we have been in agreement on process the past month and a half or two months, which is well ahead of our normal schedule. So I'm happy, and I want to thank you guys for all the work, and that's my comment.
Mrs. Yardley?
I had a question. Was, is the commitment from the fund balance, is that being committed for the school buses that we discussed at the last meeting?
Two parts for that commitment. One part is $350,000 for the budgetary reserve, and the second part is $446,756 for the buses.
Thank you.
Well.
Any other comments or questions, Mrs. Miller?
I would just like to confirm from public that we kept it within the Act 1 index of 2.4, we did not go above?
Anyone else? Who should come?
I will say, Mr. Delbert, I also thank you for making real progress toward solving the structural deficit that we've had. We are using some fund balance, although some of it is for the buses, which could be considered a capital project, so I'm not sure. And the other part being the $350,000 for a budgetary reserve, which we have omitted in recent years because we have not been able to do that without causing further difficulty in the budget. So I appreciate the work on it. At this point, are there any further comments? If not, I'm going to call the question. This is a roll call vote, so Mrs. Cron will ask for the roll.
Mrs. Bannister? Nay. Dr. Urnel?
Yes.
Mr. Casper?
Yes.
Mrs. Yardley?
Yes.
Mrs. Cullen?
Yes.
Mrs. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Kraus?
Yep.
Mr. Agoma?
Yes.
Mrs. Miller?
Yes.
Thank you. Budget passes, the proposed final budget passes Act 1. It will be put on public display. I don't know when Mr. Delbert will have that up, but it will be on public display for the, or comment. And then we will be on June 16th presuming to pass the final question. Mr. Casper?
Thank you. The next finance committee meeting is scheduled for June 6th, 2016. Thank you.
Thank you. We will then revert to the normal committee report order. The first committee report will be the activities committee by Mrs. Yardley. I do want to make a preliminary comment before I hand the microphone over to her. I know we got questions about the one item, the band trip to Orlando next March, has, does not appear on this agenda because there were a number of questions on duration and cost. Those will be answered and it will be brought up at a later date. So tonight we have the other things that were on the agenda that night. Mrs. Yardley?
Thank you, Dr. Urnel. All right, so the activities committee met on May All right, so the Activities Committee met on May 4th. As Dr. Eurnell said, we spoke about the overnight trips. We also discussed graduation and the finances for the pool, among other items. And tonight, we have, there's one motion, so I will move to recommend the approval of the following overnight trips, A through E.
Thank you. Do we have a second to the motion to approve the five overnight trips? Mrs. Cullen, thank you. Moved in second to approve these trips. Comments or questions from board members? Yes, Mrs. Schmidt?
I have a comment on A and B. I know that in the discussion at the meeting, there were questions raised on letter, on item A, the cheerleading camp, first being regarding, in the document that's attached here, there was information regarding the transportation. And while I know it was discussed in the meeting that in the document, it says cost, the cost for the previous season was $1,315. That was part of the discussion in the meeting that this would not be part of this trip, that there would be the transportation. I don't have a few of the minutes in front of me. Mrs. Yardley has them. That the transportation would not be this. So my comment is basically that the supporting document here that we have is incorrect. So I just want to clarify that, you know, what we're voting on is not what this document states based on the minutes. And then also, I believe in letter B as well, which is the cheerleading trip to Florida, again, the document that is attached here supporting this shows the original dates. And I know that part of our discussion was in regard to when they leave so that there was less school time missed. So again, in the minutes, that's reflected, but not on the documents that are on the agenda here tonight, attached.
Dr. Price, can you respond to those comments here?
The motions, if you look closely, has the correct wording in. The templates, the advisors did not revise, but the motions, we revised after conversation with them. So for instance, if you look at letter B there, you'll see the dates. It says after school on Thursday, because we told them nothing missed time, so we put the word after school in there. And down below in letter D, that was one of the trips as well. We talked about not leaving any earlier than a certain time, and that was listed there. So we changed it within the motions themselves. The templates, we did not have them reduced just for time's sake.
What about letter A in the bus? Because that's definitely in there that we are committing in that template to a $1,300 bus and that.
I have, I do have revised language from Lindsay.
Okay. Should it be part of this motion, just to clarify?
We certainly can. We may be pulling that up. We do have revised, the revised language is consistent with what we decided for the big school trip, where the fundraising was going to cover it, and if there was a shortage, they were going to possibly approach the boost report for the extra. But then, in either scenario, would the district be responsible for transportation?
Should we amend that?
Yes, you can, you can amend it to reflect Mrs. Schmidt's comment that the district is not underwriting transportation for letter A. And I read the motion anyway just to basically be approving the trips. The district isn't bound by the documents. That appear on the agenda. But if the board is in agreement to approve an amendment per Mrs. Schmidt's comment, that's the easiest way to handle it.
I just have a question for going forward, because it does, the minutes do say that the board agrees to support the trip as long as the lower of the two busing options was utilized and the transportation was not charged to the district. So it says it in the minutes, but should we, as a practice going forward, have them amend the documents that are attached to the board agenda so that when people go back and look at it, say at a future date, and they want to come and look up the trip that's attached to what was approved, that it would be corrected?
I think this one was just, we normally would do that. I think this one was just a bit unusual because the boarding was a little earlier this month. So the templates and the changing, it was a little difficult to make that happen. But in the future, we will definitely do that.
Okay. Thank you.
So Mrs. Yardley, are you amending your motion?
Yes, that's fine.
And Mrs. Cullen, I believe you were the second to your agreement. Any other comments or questions for board members before we call this question? If not, all those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries nine zero. Mrs. Yardle?
Okay, the next regularly scheduled Activities Committee meeting is set for September 14th, 2016. Thank you.
Thank you. The Curriculum Committee. The Curriculum Committee met just last week, May 12th, on Thursday night. There were a number of items discussed, including some issues or interest in changing this cyber program in Rich. Tonight, we do have one motion that's here, and I apologize to the board members who were there because we didn't bring it up as a motion that night, but to be consistent and to reflect the fact that this is a purchase of a piece of equipment that will be used in a school-specific education, special education class. I'm going to make this motion to approve Mrs. Deanna Story's request to pursue a donor choice grant for iPads in her special education class at South at Oak School. Do I have a second to that motion?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Agoma. Moved in second to approve this motion. Comments or questions for board members? If not, all those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries nine zero. The next Curriculum Committee meeting is scheduled for June 13th, 2016, and the probable topic that will consume a lot of our time, Dr. Scheid, I believe, will be the scheduling of the middle school.
Yes, Dr. Eurnell, it will. We will be presenting at least updates on where we are if we haven't reached recommendations for both middle school and high school. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll move to facilities. Mrs. Schmidt?
Thank you, Dr. Eurnell. The Facilities Committee met on May 2nd. There are four motions this evening for facilities. The first is motion to approve the request from the high school life skills class to plant a pumpkin patch in the courtyard.
Do we have a second to the motion for a pumpkin patch?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Miller. Moved in second to approve this pumpkin patch request. Comments or questions from board members? If not, all those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries nine zero. Mrs. Schmidt?
Second motion is to obsolete items A and B, a central middle school item, to B is the technology department.
And do we have a second to that motion?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Cullen. Moved in second to approve the obsolete items list. Comments or questions from board members? Not? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries nine zero. Mrs. Schmidt?
The third item is a motion to approve Stone Ridge Incorporated in the amount of $206,400 for high school pool ground-level ventilation and ultraviolet light system.
Do we have a second to that motion?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Yardley. Moved in second to approve Stone Ridge Incorporated for the high school pool renovations. Comments or questions for board members? Not? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Yes.
Motion carries eight one. Thank you. Mrs. Schmidt?
The fourth item is a motion to accept and award bids, R F Ps, as listed below in items A through J. I, I'm sorry.
L.
L. It's my context. I'm sorry. Items A through L.
Thank you. Do we have a second to that motion?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Casper. Moved in second to approve the award and bids, award bids and R F Ps for the items A through L. Comments or questions for board members? If not, all those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries nine zero. Mrs. Schmidt?
The next Facilities Committee meeting is scheduled for June 6th.
Thank you. At this point, we will move to the intermediate unit. Mrs. Miller?
Thank you, Dr. Eurnell. We did not meet. Our next scheduled meeting is May 17th at 7:00 PM at the Bucks County Annual. I would like to make a comment that I attended the walk role.